This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, it's Tuesday, December 12th, and a call to order, Cape Carter Planning Board meeting. First order of business is approval of the minutes. Everybody got a copy of the minutes?
Yes.
We've got to look at the minutes. And one comment that I want to make on the minutes is that the condensed version that we have suits me just as well as the longer ones that we had in the past. Because it has all the salient points. So I take a get a motion to approve the minutes of November 12th.
I'll make that motion.
Second? Second. All in favor? Any discussion? All in favor? Five zero. Public comment. We have nobody out there to make any public comment tonight. And before we get into the first item, which is a mailbox issue that we've been talking, I want to make some comments. You know, last night was a somewhat provocative meeting for the people who are here about what happened and how it happened and how the agenda got changed and the planning board moved to the end. And I would encourage you all, feel free to, as we get into the stuff or later on in your comment section, if you want to make comments on that, I'll entertain that. But let's, what I would like to do is, we have this meeting and the January meeting for this sitting board, I like to take the items we have and take them forward and see where they come out tonight, and then we'll decide an agenda for January, and then the board will change, or part of the board will change. Yes, sir?
On the point of the board changing, is February a full meeting for us, or is that the meeting where the new group's here and we're gone?
I think it'll be that the new people will be seated at the beginning of the meeting.
Okay, so we won't be.
So we won't be there.
We won't be seated. Okay, gotcha. So next month in January will be our last full meeting?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. This mailbox thing, the whole idea on this mailbox thing is addressing the, well, the letter says vehicular collisions, and we'll have, Julie covered that when we get to that. It was a police report that was issued that y'all got a copy of. But basically, this issue is about these concrete mailboxes and whether they are a hazard in the community. And what I'd like to do is, I know we've all talked this before, I'd like to go around and have each member say what they choose to say on that. I'll finish with it, and then we'll see if there's, if we want to make some kind of motion going forward. Who wants to start? Okay, Ted?
I don't see the need in doing concrete mailboxes. The reason being is it brings more harm to the vehicle and the person in it. That's just my thoughts. I mean, I mean, to get tore down a year, evidently ain't many. You put up a concrete mailbox, more damage. That's just my thoughts on it. You don't want to risk nobody's health getting in a concrete mailbox with steel in it. That's just what I think.
Ted, can I ask your experience? Is that something you would reinforce?
The?
The mailbox structure itself? Like, would you put rebar or something in that? Just tapping into your experience as a contractor.
Yeah. Some sort of divisions, we do, everybody has the same mailbox, hardly ever concrete. You go to Spooners Creek, where I'm doing a big house over there, everybody got a concrete because they're big million-dollar homes and, you know. But I don't think Bay Shore, Lejeune Road, or Boe, keep them simple wood.
Yep.
If they do get hit, you know.
They goof.
But if you got a cinder block and brick mailbox, it'd do a lot more damage to the person's car and probably bring harm to them. That's just my opinion.
Sure.
Yes, sir. I agree with everything you've said, and I'd like to take it a step further. I had limited success with the postal authorities in Swansboro obtaining a straight answer from the folks there. They do have suggestions which are against solid structures, but in the past, we used to have to apply at the post office in order to put up a mailbox. And they encouraged us to put them all on the same side of the street. Now, I thought at the time that was for the efficiency and ease of delivery of the carriers. But I haven't been able to get a straight answer to that. But I think we could investigate that further. And I'm very much in favor of all the mailboxes being on the same side of the street for the efficiency of the carrier, unless the carrier says, oh, but I get more money if I have to drive up and down twice, like our garbage people do.
Because of their pay per the hour?
I don't mind them. That's why I need to, I would like to check into that further, just to see.
It is in their guidelines, though.
Yes, it is in their guidelines.
Guidelines that no rigid, they want flexible mailboxes with the standard four-by-four poster. They make some that are on a metal thing, but, you know, when you hit it, it just pushes right over. And putting it back up is no major effort, so.
And if you observe the ones on Manatee Street, there are many that are leaning that I doubt if they've even been reported to the police. But they've obviously been hit by those.
Me? I don't have an issue with concrete mailboxes or brick mailboxes or cinder block mailboxes as long as they follow the guidelines and they're not out in the street. If they're off the street according to the postal regulations, I don't have a problem with it. I don't think that, from the last report I heard, that the police even said that they, it's kind of a minimal occasion whenever somebody hits a mailbox, and I didn't think that it would be prudent to make a mandatory blanket rule across the community for something that didn't happen that often. And there's a lot of communities, like Ted said, that they have concrete mailboxes, brick mailboxes, cinder block mailboxes across the whole community. So I don't have an issue with it.
Alec?
I tend to see it the same way Neil does. You know, the more and more I continue to kind of hear all of your voice, your opinions, though, and, you know, how you're talking about some of those specific areas in question. I did, you know, go on record saying that, that I would support something like this if we're looking at targeted areas where in my mind it makes sense, like if buy a boat ramp or something like that, right? Like, and I know that that increases the complexity that we're looking at here, but, you know, just if we're going off the data, right? Like, police department provided their kind of, their stuff and said, hey, this isn't an overly common thing. If we're, in other words, if we're looking at it from targeting specific areas of the town, I could see that, and I would get behind that. But if we're looking at other places outside of that, then I would probably lean more towards what Neil just mentioned a moment ago.
Julie, do you want to, you got that thing from the police department? Do you want to just summarize that? Yes, they say, well, go ahead, just summarize.
Yeah, this was what the police chief reported several months ago. It's not an overly common occurrence for mailboxes to be hit by cars. Probably eighty percent of the incidents where mailboxes have been knocked over or hit by cars happen somewhere in the Star Hill subdivision, probably two to five times a year, maybe. Sometimes we go a year and there are no incidents, but other times it'll happen a couple of times in the span of a few months. Last report taken was for a single incident in which a driver hit three different mailboxes on Quailwood Circle. This does not appear to be a big issue in the town of Cape Carteret. Some teenagers vandalized some mailboxes a while ago, but they were apprehended and it hasn't happened since.
Okay. I did a little measuring and looking around. Just summarize where we've been. In October meeting, we brought this up when it was first brought up, and it was a two-to-two tie, which says the motion didn't pass. In November, it was brought up by Paxton, who wasn't at the other meeting, and I tabled it because if we'd taken a vote or turned it around the other way, and I didn't want to, I didn't want to appear like we're flip-flopping. So here we are today. I went out and we've got, if you look at the street width, most of it's twenty, but there's, some of the smaller streets are just eighteen feet, okay? The mailbox, according to U.S. Postal Regulations, the front of the mailbox is supposed to be six inches off the edge of the curb. In other words, the front face where the door is. But most of them, if you look in Cape Carteret, have moved them back at least a foot or two, sometimes even three feet from that where the car, the mail carrier goes, actually goes off the pavement to do it. You'll see that around. So I measured my truck, which is a standard, it's not a big truck, it's just a regular, and it's eight feet from the tip of the mirrors to the tip of the mirrors. So you go down one of these eighteen-foot or even a twenty-foot thing, there's not a lot of room. And trailers are wider than that. If you look at the axles on most single-boat trailers, they're usually wider than the car. So I feel like it's something, and Paxton mentioned something, if you go drive around and look at it, you see a lot of tipped mailboxes. Well, how do they get tipped? Somebody bumped them, okay? And I was telling you at the very first meeting, when my daughter first got her license, in fact, I asked her about it after I brought it up to this meeting, and I said, do you remember it? Oh, absolutely, do, she said. She said, I was, I reached, she had a little Volkswagen Beetle, and she said, I reached over to make sure I had my calculus book there for going to school, and she knocked down a mailbox. And she called me immediately. And I went over there and I says, lady, I says, I'll have your mailbox fixed before tomorrow morning. And so I fixed, it was easy to dug her new hole, put a new post, and then it was done. And so, but I think if that had been a concrete mailbox, she would have wrecked that little Volkswagen.
And with the engine in the back, she could have been hurt.
Yeah. So I feel like that, I would not make a motion that for anybody who has a concrete mailbox that has to be changed, or that the code enforcement officer would have to retroactively do it. But I would say in a motion to prohibit future ones, so we don't get like, if they grow like some of those high-rent communities that you were speaking down with Spooners Creek, we'd have a lot of damage, because it's a lot more frequent than the police department say, because many of them don't get reported at the police department. So.
Can I ask a question before we go forward?
Yeah, sure.
Frank or Julie, in your experience, have any municipalities or anywhere you've heard of made kind of ordinances centered around these issues where they target specific zones or areas where perhaps it could be a problem, such as where wide vehicles or things are being moved?
In the communities that I've worked in, I do not recall any regulations that governed the materials used for the mailbox. That doesn't mean that those don't exist in some communities, they just haven't been in the communities that I've worked for in North Carolina, and I don't even think in California either. There are some subdivisions, particularly higher-end subdivisions, that may require nicer, more decorative mailboxes, but I've not worked in a community that had such a regulation, so.
Got it.
That doesn't mean it doesn't exist, I just haven't.
And to comment on what you've said, Alec, I think it's either all or not, you know, to divide up the communities would, as you said, add complexity, big complexity. And if a motion were to make a recommendation to the board to put this in the ordinance were to go forward, it would be just, in my mind, it would be a motion that would be for all future houses that are built here that they can't put up a concrete mailbox. And the reason I say that is, didn't have one that I knew of until that one on Deer Creek about five years ago, and the one on Neopon just this year. Been two of them crop up, and I said, are these going to become like hula hoops, you know, and everybody's going to want one? I'm paying myself. So anybody want to make a motion? Want me to make a motion?
Well, was it this brought up last night as part of the meeting agenda, and didn't they just ignore it and let it die for lack of a second?
That was not this issue, it was the sign, it was the amendment that you all had recommended regarding the reflective mailbox signs.
It's okay.
So different issue.
It's okay.
And I'll make another comment on that. Based on what happened last night, I feel like any motion that comes from this board is going to be ignored at the Board of Commissioners. But, you know, our board is to do what our board is charged to do. This was picked up as an issue some time ago, it's been around here for years, so we're addressing it, and however it comes out, that's how it comes out. We make the recommendation to the board, and it's their option to ignore it. So that's.
Fully agree.
That's where I'm mad on. Okay. I'll make a motion. Effective on date of passage, and this I would want to be wordsmithed by our staff, okay?
I'm assuming that if there is direction to pursue some ordinance amendment, that you would want the staff to draft it and bring it back to you at the January meeting?
Yes.
I presume, if that's where you're going, so.
Yes.
Okay.
And I'm fine with that. And I do want to do it, because it's been on our plate here for a while, and get it done, and we only have January to get it done. The motion be effective on date of passage of the ordinance, all mailboxes will be installed subject to USPS guidelines, and then unyielding mailbox of concrete, brick, or other masonry construction are prohibited. Just that simple. So that would be my motion. Have a second? A second? Any more discussion? All in favor? Motion passes three to two. And for the record, we were fair on this thing, we didn't flip-flop it around.
No, I think it was very objective, so.
Okay. Next item is discussion of a letter to the General Assembly regarding the House Bill 409. I don't know the number of the Senate bill, it is now in the Senate, on accessory dwelling units. You got a copy of the revised letter, which I did a little wordsmithing on some of the things, corrected the, it was a metal lapse on my part, the way I said it, that has been corrected. And also, we added a portion on the, what the recommendation was from the League of Municipalities.
I have it right here, thank you.
No, that's okay, thanks.
So I'll entertain, first, is there any discussion on this about the letter, about anything that's in it, or things that are controversial, or things we would want to change or add?
Nothing here. The only thing I'll say is, you know, just kind of tags along with the comment that you made just a few moments ago. Last night at the meeting, it seemed that, you know, if you did a temperature check, and it was not the way of the board to seem to want to go forward with that. What I might offer up as an alternative to that, which it seems is probably the more likely thing just for everybody to consider tonight, we can kick it around, is that we make a recommendation that they align with the League of Municipalities, because I think there, it's not just Cape Carteret or who, it's all these other municipalities kind of getting behind that and saying, yes, we support that. So just something for us to think about, because otherwise, it kind of seems like it's just, I almost got the perception, and there were a few of us present there last night, right? And for the good of anybody might be listening in, the commissioners last night, just basically, when, you know, Chair King was giving his report, talking about this letter that we might present to them, didn't really seem to feel the need for it. So kind of the perception I took away especially was that they were just kind of like, hey, let it go where it goes, and we're not going to act on it. So when you did mention the League of Municipalities, though, I did see some faces change. So for what it's worth, I just wanted to kind of throw that out there, and we can talk about it or not, but otherwise, I don't have any other further comment, and I'd be fine with the letter how it is.
Neil?
No, I read the letter. I didn't find anything, you know, out of sorts with it, and I don't have any problem with it.
I think the second paragraph addressed pretty much the position of the League of Municipalities. You know, as I see it, if this board, Board of Commissioners, wanted to change that so that we didn't have single-family developments that you could put in a accessory building, they would have done it long ago, because this ordinance has been challenged many times in this town. I turned down numerous permits for garage apartments, mother-in-law suites, when I was a zoning officer. We've had several go to the Board of Adjustment. One went to overturn one of my decisions to deny it, to see if the Board of Adjustment would overrule me, and second for a variance. And then we also went to Superior Court on this with one, in which the judge ruled in favor of the town that we were, we could enforce our ordinance as it is read. So it was pretty simple for me, and I felt like this thing, I look at our legislature as a body, and this thing comes out, and it's a one-size-fits-all. What do they know about a community coastal North Carolina, one in the southeast of Raleigh and one in the mountains? How can you make something where the state is now going to dictate to you how you can control density when certainly the people in the local boards know how to do that better? And this town has done it and rigorously enforced that ruling for over fifty years. So, anyway.
My thoughts on it, like I said before, the criteria, if they could meet it, it's fine. But I did some messing around, and as long as I've been building here, a lot of people won't meet the criteria.
That's right.
You know, if you got a house and you got a three-bedroom septic, you ain't going to get no mother-in-law suite.
Yep, that's correct.
So I think you barking up a tree that you ain't going to get up. I don't think it's necessary, because things are already in place. You got to start off with environmental, and then you go to zoning. You got to pass them two hurdles to go to permitting. Three-bedroom septic, you going to put another bedroom in a accessory building? Ain't got room for it on your septic, so you don't even get past environmental. You don't even get to zoning. It kind of controls itself.
Interesting.
Well, that's what I sit on. I think, you know, I did a garage apartment thing over on Holly. Frank's familiar with it. Everybody thought he was putting a bathroom and bedroom up there. Well, as a builder, I can't do it, because it didn't fit the criteria. He had a three-bedroom septic tank. Plus, y'all had an ordinance in for no accessory buildings for mother-in-law suites. So with that being said, if he did have the capacity on his septic, by God, do it. But I'm going to say ninety percent of the people do not have the septic system for auxiliary suite. Because when you go and apply for a septic, what we always look for is a three-bedroom or four-bedroom. And the reason why we look at it, that's because what we're going to build on site, we ain't putting an extra bedroom on there for future. You follow me? I mean, it sort of gets nipped in the butt before it ever gets going.
What I would say on that is, you know, I ran into just that situation when I added an addition on mine to, would have to upgrade the system to three to four. And I got a permit to do that, you know what I mean? Had the guy out there with his little auger.
Doing some cool.
The other thing I say about, and I also agree, Ted, that it probably in this community isn't going to be nearly as prevalent as it would be in a community maybe outside a big city where.
Where you got plenty of land.
Where there's more land or more need for affordable housing. You know, people down here won't come, so I don't think it'll be as big, but I just, I don't know, I feel like that this thing has been, all experience I've had has been somewhat the sacred cow of this town, and when we went to court, that ended up costing us, good, attorney's fees, must have been eight or ten thousand dollars before we were done, because, you know, you get into the court system, it drags on and on and on and on, and the longer it drags on, the attorneys are put. The other thing about septic systems is you can virtually, if you can, the only thing the guy checks when he comes out is he puts out auger to see if it'll perk. Whether you put a peat system in, where you put in an equal pressure manifold system, or you put an old conventional system, all of the effluent goes to the groundwater. Doesn't matter what kind of system you have. And I'm saying, because of what we've had in the tests, and I got this from the Coastal Federation and also from North Carolina State, the bacteria levels in Pettiford Creek and the sound around here, the fact that they closed the shellfish, shellfish in nineteen ninety-eight in three or four places in front of our shoreline, I don't know that we want to allow this to proliferate, okay? And the final thing I want to say is, in all likelihood, anything that comes out of this board, no matter what it is, next week is not going to be heard, okay? It's just my feeling based on the fact that the planning board got moved to the end of the meeting when it's classically been at the front of the meeting. That's just my opinion, but I have to do, this board, what I think the board should do. Do its business, give it to them, and then it's out of our hands.
Very good. Pass it on down low, let them make the decision, because they got to do it. We can beat this whole stuff to death, but they're going to make the decision.
But that's the way it's always been, you know? I've been on, what, the planning board now, almost, in two different terms, almost ten years, and we're just an advisory board. But I will tell you, I will tell you this, this board, in all the years I've been in it, had more healthy discussion about things than will ever occur up there at the Board of Commissioners. We dig in there, we get into the weeds deeper, yeah, we have more controversy, because people have differences of opinion, but that's what this board is for.
That's exactly right.
So.
Yes, sir.
Want to speak?
I have long said that it's not zoning that controls the density in this area.
It's the covenants.
So much, no, so much as the septic. That's exactly right.
Sure, the environmental.
The septic is the first issue. And if you, and here's what I think now, this might just put a new wrinkle on it. If you have a three-bedroom septic system, and your children are gone, in college, married, and one of the mothers-in-law would like a little privacy, what's wrong with a mother-in-law apartment if you have the septic capacity? Now. Now, they they control it with number of people living there. A four-bedroom septic system says you can have two people per bedroom and no more. A three-bedroom system says you can have six people and no more. That's the, that's the rule. So if 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 you have somebody who needs a place near family but doesn't want to be right underfoot, I say that's okay. Now, I don't want to be the chairman of the Star Hill Architectural Review Committee if if everybody in North Carolina septic allowing could have a mother-in-law apartment. Because I bet you we'd have fifteen applied tomorrow. That moves a mother-in-law or the parent out of the house if the septic allows it. So I'm conflicted. Now, that was very astute of you to suggest that the approach should be agreeing with the League of Municipalities. That takes it to a different level. So.
That I I think, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I I think to your point, Paxton, it does take it to a different level, right? Because it's like, it's not necessarily just us, right? It's you're aligning to, you know, something that's more, something that's accredited, something that's been there, right? And it's like, they have a lot of that. Now, I will say, you know, you bring up an interesting point right now. That wrinkle you talk about, you know, you got me thinking. I was like, wait a minute. That's that's actually like a really interesting point. Like, what does that look like? Both sides of that, right? Whether for better or for worse.
Go ahead.
Just one clarification. So the way that the legislation is written right now, it doesn't apply to covenants. And so it would not override the covenants in any subdivision, just so you're clear on that.
I completely understand.
Right.
But there are some areas that don't have covenants that might allow this.
Understood.
And some live, we don't have covenants and no HOA or nothing like that. But with that being said, our lots are like posters stamps.
Fifteen thousand square feet, mostly.
Standing.
There's a few left. There's a few left.
I know Star Hill has a H O A that, I'm giving them to build a house on Apollo.
Well, I'm sorry.
And I think they wouldn't allow how long house over there. It's in their covenants.
Architectural approval.
Yeah.
Twelve hundred square foot minimum in most subdivisions of Star Hill. But it's the appearance that HOA is concerned with.
Yeah.
More so than the interior, interior, yeah.
Yeah, um, well, yeah. What drove me is why would people in the legislature try to put this all the municipalities that, all over the state that are so different than ours? They don't know any of the, we we focus pretty much on on septic because of our being so close to two bodies of water that everybody enjoy Pettiford Creek and our sound. And so that was a negative issue here, but other other towns and municipalities may have other issues why. It's, and and the other thing on that you mentioned, that I got a these mother-in-law apartments. Well, if you have a three-bedroom house and only two people live in there and the mother-in-law had to come in, why couldn't you use that? And the way they look at it when I talk to those guys is, well, you know, people don't live in these houses forever and don't own them forever. Moves on as a family could move in there with all the people and still have a mother-in-law apartment. So it, and I also think in our area, there would be more than you would think. People would want to have these mother-in-law apartments and I'll and use them when there's no mother-in-law, use them as rental. Who would, couples come into the beach for a week, rent those things? And it wouldn't be affordable housing for sure.
Well, it could be if it if it if it's not a oceanfront beach cottage, that could be considered an affordable vacation.
Well, affordable vacation, but that isn't what these kind of law.
But but I thought you were gonna say people would want to rent them. And I, and I totally agree, they might want to rent.
Well, that's the same issue faced in a lot of different cities right now. If you follow some of the stuff that's going on around like the the platforms, the verbos, the Airbnbs, right? Some of the things like that. And I don't know how this impacts that, but.
I built up there in Beaufort, it's a subdivision called Bo Coast.
Uh huh.
I probably built two hundred houses in there in the last three years. And I'm gonna say eighty percent of them are Airbnbs.
Wow.
And they keep them booked.
Oh, I bet.
And they get primo money. But with that said, I what what I keep hearing, the HOA out there might put an end to it. Because they have so many problems with teenagers.
Sure.
Adults on vacation. I built a house for this gentleman and his wife out there. They had a daughter. They got them during golf carts. Next thing you know, head on collision with a car. She was drinking. So they running into their kind of problems.
And I think, I think the point that you're making right there speaks to some of the unintended things that can come out of anything, right? But more importantly, what we've kind of all been going back and forth here about, which is having that, as you would say, Mike, that healthy conversation about where should this land in terms of, we're looking at our locality, right? We're not necessarily concerned with the outside, but we're us. So I don't, I kind of, if if it were up to me, I would say the best way for us to move this forward and then let the board do what they may is to align to the League of Municipalities verbiage. And just essentially the motion will look something like, you know, the ver, hey, we recommend that you align to the League of Municipalities or show support for this, right? I think that would be the best way, not only to move the town forward if if in fact the board chooses, but also, you know, the, it it would have a lot of weight in Raleigh. Because you can't deny what those folks have done in the past, right? I mean, they just, they have that level of credibility, so.
Let me ask a question on that. So, I think we're aligned with the League of Municipalities on this, but how specific? I don't understand.
Take our letter, take our letter, do away with it, the one that we've drafted and just say, what they're gonna say, you should get behind that.
Do we send a letter to these to these Senator, Congressperson, and and even e- 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 even the governor?
Frank, what does that look like? I mean, there's, I I don't think, I don't think it's it's that necessarily. I'm thinking, I'm thinking more like, hey, we're recommending us potentially, right? That we turn to the Board of Commissioners and, hey, you should get behind this verbiage. Like, does, do, when League of Municipalities goes and advocates for these things in Raleigh, do they present forward all of the towns who have supported a statement like that or or how, what does that look like?
Yeah, so i- it's pretty common for the League of Municipalities to take a position on any number of issues under consideration and to rally the various cities and towns to comment and send in their own comments to their senators and and Assembly members. So, you know, typically, what I've generally done with these kind of things is we've had the board consider a resolution taking whatever position they have on an issue. So, you know, for example, the Board of Commissioners could approve a resolution saying we're opposed to House Bill four oh nine for whatever reasons you want to articulate. And so that that's pretty common and that's generally what it would look like. You know, really, the most effective lobbying, though, is for your individual leaders of the community to talk to Celeste Karns and Norm Sanderson and share their thoughts with them. What's helpful with the resolution is it's a representation of the collective view of the community, right? So it has more weight. But so it's really, it's a combination of both. If you all would like to send something along, I'm happy to draft a resolution for the board to consider. I'm also happy to take, there's nothing wrong with the letter. I think the main point, as I conveyed to you before, is something like this needs to come from the elected leaders, not from the planning board.
We understand, we understand.
I have a question. Julie, when you indicated that the League of Municipalities had expressed opposition to this, did they send any specifics?
Oh, yeah.
They basically said, and he drew that at one point.
I can't.
That he was taking, he was pushing upon of all his powers to zone.
But no specifics, just that general stuff, which is, which is pretty clear cut, but.
So a- a- almost universally, the League of Municipalities will oppose any effort to take away local decision-making authority. That's, that's common, so.
That's what they're paid for.
Sure.
A League of Municipalities.
Yeah, what struck me the most on that was a one-size-fits-all which would eventually be a statute to try to fit it to every community from the coast to the mountains. Regardless of demographics, population, and environment.
I will say also, and just just for everybody's benefit here, there is a little bit of confusion on the board because, as I understood yesterday, one of the commissioners thinks that this has already gone through. And my understanding here, and correct me if I'm wrong, please, is that, and I'll, and I'll read directly from the League of Municipalities here. Once again, NCLM members and staff successfully staved off attempts at undermining local land use planning authority. Whether these proposals came in the form of eliminating extratorial jurisdiction, abolishing all single-family, only zoning, or requiring the accessory dwelling units be allowed in all residential neighborhoods. So it sounds like they're not anywhere right now getting this passed. So I think there is also some confusion, right? Maybe just hearsay or whatever it is versus what it actually is going on. And if I recall correctly, we were talking, part of the reason is because of back-channel conversations like you're suggesting. Some advocacy in person, right, and things like that, that I'm sure is going on. So i- it sounds like, given that, I mean, it just, we do have some time if we were to decide to make a recommendation, right? This, it's not like this is going to be imminent. It doesn't sound like it. So just want to put that out there because I, again, that's something that came away from the conversation last night at the Commissioners' meeting.
If I could, they're in recess right now. They're not meeting, they're not discussing anything.
That's right.
It won't be until the spring. And and they will pick and choose what they want to take up and when.
Right.
And this is in committee. It hasn't come out of committee.
Yep.
Nothing's happening right now.
And I recognize that. And that was, believe it or not, a relief. I didn't know how fast this thing was moving. Julie helped us on that. But I would, obviously, I'm the most supportive of something here in 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 this group, I feel like. But I would want to get something earlier, in earlier, the better. So certainly before it gets out of committee, you know. The only reason I put all this stuff in this letter about our environment because I wanted to make the point to them that how do you know how this would affect us?
Well, I think, you know, and Paxton, would you like me to to actually read the sticking point that they make to you? Because I don't know if you've had the opportunity to look at this. Yeah, so it says here specifically to that, they say, this bill, in effort to increase housing stock, preempts local government authority to regulate ADUs, accessory dwelling units, effectively nullifying many existing local ADU ordinances. In its current form, this bill requires local governments to allow at least one ADU on any single-family parcel in the state that is not subject to HOA covenants. There are few restrictions on the structures themselves and local governments would be precluded from leveraging traditional local controls to ensure housing affordability and safety. Of significant concern for cities is the prospect that ADUs will be built and used for short-term, uh, short-term rental properties, further exaggerating the housing crisis that is overwhelming many cities. So again, the unintended consequences, right? So, um, just wanted to put that out there for your benefit because I know you haven't had the chance to to look at it.
So another thing that I seem to recall when I approached Frank, and you'll have to help me remember this, because I expressed concern about Airbnbs within the town of Cape Carteret that exists now. And I thought your answer was that Cape Carteret wasn't going to get in to regulate them any more than they do at Emerald Isle. Was that correct?
So the town doesn't currently regulate vacation rentals. I I don't know what the will of the elected leaders might be in the future.
But we don't currently regulate.
We don't, we don't currently regulate them. And I'm not sure exactly of the status, but there have been various bills put forth that basically tell the local government to prohibit vacation rentals. You can regulate them in certain ways, but you can't prohibit them, so.
I have a little.
And I'm not sure where that stands.
I have a little different take on it. For example, I have a few inherited trailer lots on Emerald Isle. And we absolutely do not allow Airbnbs there because of the the vacationers, the weekenders, the noise, the drinking. And we just don't allow. But what I would like to see, if we start getting more, is that we get the tax revenue from the occupancy tax. Now, I'm, I'm really hot on that and I'm in my, our discussion to be had. I want to expand that. I want to make sure that every boat ramp pass that's issued in Cape Carteret, that we get taxes from the boats and the trailers. You know, let's don't just let the the trough be empty when we give a valuable thing to somebody to use the boat ramp. We also need taxes on the boats and the and the trailers, unless they can show us that they're taxed somewhere else. So, sorry, but that's, that's just, you know, trying to keep taxes low for us who live here.
Yeah, so a couple of thoughts, you know, any potential regulation of a big issue that's going to require a lot of discussion and a lot of consideration. I don't personally see that soon, but it would really depend on the elected officials. I don't know that we've had any significant problems with them in Cape Carteret that I'm aware of. I'm sure there certainly are probably isolated incidents with regard to, you know, is, those taxes are elected by the county. There is absolutely amazing software out back on how frequently occupied. It's come a long way. It's actually a little bit scary how much you can glean from by lots of locals to crack down on that for the reasons that you mentioned. The other thing that I would say about the vacation rentals is a lot of times people will make a distinction between units that are managed by a brick-and-mortar agency, i.e. a Blue Water or an Emerald Isle Realty, Shorewood, those kinds of folks. And then those that are self-managed by an Airbnb host or a VRBO host or whatever. And so you pretty much have to treat those vacation rental units the same regardless of who manages them. In some communities, they'll put certain requirements in place that will apply to them all, like a common one is in-person check-ins. But it's real popular on VRBO or Airbnb to let the person punch in the keypad. A lot of people like that convenience, both the visitor and the host. But there are different ways that people go about regulating that. And ultimately, what I would suggest to you all and to the Board of Commissioners, I think it really comes down to behavior more so than use. I mean, in my experience and in my opinion, the use is still residential use, right? If my family and my wife and my boys go to a place and we act just like your family and we're good respectful visitors, that's fine, right? If I go there with my family and we're just raising hell and and causing all kinds of problems for the neighbors, that's when you get these issues. So I've always encouraged folks to think more about regulating the behavior as opposed to some of those things with regard to who uses it or how often they use it and so forth. So for what that's worth, so.
Okay, um, we've picked this around pretty well, I agree. And I appreciate all your comments. Does anybody want to make a motion? I would suggest the motion would be allow town staff to take this and do however they think is best for the town.
Like that, yeah.
To get the, to bring it before the Board of Commissioners. That's what I would be asking for, but does anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, a motion that we send, the the intent of this letter, however the town staff chooses to modify before the Board of Commissioners.
I thought we were gonna have a draft. We have it back here in January.
Well, that was gonna be my question for you.
All right. Thank you. But but that's what you're speaking.
Yes, because that will be the final document.
Yes, because that will be the final document that goes to the board, what they produce over the course of the next month.
Yes.
Okay.
So, so if I understand you correctly, you're basically asking us to draft a document that incorporates the various concerns that are expressed in this letter in a way that the Board of Commissioners could adopt and move forward to the league municipalities and to the Assembly person.
Is you could send the letter the way it is or however you see fit. Having a lot more experience with this than any of us, I, I'm okay with however that comes up, but if you bring it back before us in January, we could, we could have a, a motion on it.
Well, why, why don't we do this then? Why don't we draft a formal resolution for you all to review? And it'll include the provisions that I think you all have hit on with the letter and the conversation. If you're comfortable with that, great. If not, you can tweak it in whatever way you'd like. And there, there is really no urgency to this. I mean, the earliest it would be considered again is April, and it may not even be considered until 2025, and it may not ever be considered again for that matter, so.
Understood.
That, that may be so, but this board is going to change here in February, so if, if you have this resolution.
Yeah, I, I certainly respect that, and we'll have it ready for you for January, and then we can decide whichever you'd like at that time.
Okay.
Discussion. Is there a second?
So, my, my motion.
Second.
I don't even know that we need a motion to that. We're asking.
Okay, we're not voting on anything. We're just asking them to produce a document.
A document that he, he would choose to present before the Board of Commissioners.
And we'll vote on that.
Yes.
Okay, gotcha.
Isn't that correct?
Yeah, we'll bring it back to you at your January meeting, and you all can decide on whether you want to make that recommendation or not. And we will incorporate a lot of the same provisions that are in the league municipalities write-ups about these issues and mix in some of the local flavor.
Thanks, Frank. Thanks, Julie.
Very good. Okay, so that takes care of that item. Okay. Next item is election of a new planning board chair. And it's obvious, this agenda, that item was on this agenda before last night. You all got this, what? Thursday or Friday last week. And, and the reason for that is four of, four peoples, one has been already resolved, but there's others, the board is changing in February. And what I, I didn't want, to go back in time, when I first came, was appointed to the board, Susan Hall was chair, and I told Susan I have no interest in being the chair of this committee. I just, we were right in the middle. We were very, right in the middle of some very difficult things, and I said, look, I want to be on the board, be a soldier for you, and dig through these things. So, I never, but it happened, okay? And now I think that even before last night, I was seriously considered separand down, so I thought it would be appropriate to appoint for this board to choose a new chair so that getting into February, we have somebody leading the organization. That's simply where I'm at. And, and with that.
Do you think that's, do you think that's still appropriate?
Absolutely. I'm not going to be there.
Mike, you mentioned right up front, you said, "Given the way that the discussion went yesterday, I don't understand how that affects this appointment of a new chair."
Well, all it did was, I, I was going to take December and January to decide whether I wanted to seek a new seat. That's been resolved for me.
I got you.
Okay, so I'm saying, it could have been that I chose to seek a new seat. It was more than likely that I would finish out my term and that would be it. And I wanted somebody to be chairing the committee when this board changed hands with new people on it. Somebody to lead them, lead them on. That, that, that was my intent, even before last night, but last night makes it pretty clear.
Okay. Are we making a motion to identify a new chair?
And appointments, opposed like nominations, don't require a second, so. I'll open the floor to nominations for chair of this board.
I'll nominate Alex.
Okay. Anybody else want to nominate anybody?
What is that?
That's.
Clock ticking.
All right. We only have one nomination. Does that require a vote, Frank?
If you are electing a chair, yes, that's going to require a vote of.
All in favor of Alex to chair the planning board going forward?
From this day on?
Yes, from right now.
Who in the hills, Alex?
Alex, right there.
I'm sorry.
Am I able to vote for myself?
Yes, absolutely.
Sure.
Okay, all not in favor? And are you abstaining, or?
No, he voted for it.
I'll vote for that one. Okay, I, I didn't, I didn't see that hand behind that big sweatshirt you got on.
And it's not the person, it's the procedure.
I don't, I don't take that that way. You know that. But, um, okay. Thank you.
I, I will admit to you that I am just not familiar enough with what the UDO says regarding this issue. I don't know that, I'd, I'd really have to look at it again. It may require the new board to take another action to appoint a chairperson. Yeah, I'm going to have to look at it and see what it says. You may be right, but I, I just want to put that out there that we need to review that and make sure. So, you, you may potentially be the chair for two months, or it may be a longer period of time, but I really just need to look at that.
Totally fine.
You know what was probably been more appropriate is before we took that vote, I should have resigned, and I'm.
That's kind of how I took it, but I mean, I understand, yeah, procedurally, yeah.
That's one of the reasons I don't need to be chair anymore. Forget those little details. I, I think the, annually, the board, the planning board elects its own chair. And being that I'm not going to be here anymore, and we won't have an opportunity after I'm gone, I think it's appropriate for us to see Alex as the chair.
Well, I, I mean, I guess we'll let you and, you know, you, Julie and Frank, you'll look into it and let us know.
Yeah, I'm looking at it at the moment. Just cannot recall what the language says.
I think it's sixteen.
We, well, we had, we have all the ordinances recodified now on the, on the website.
Ted, you made me laugh, man.
So the.
Who's Alex?
I ain't real good on names.
It's just okay, just, it was a pretty funny moment.
The, this is, this is what the ordinance says, or the code says, "The planning board shall elect a chairperson and create and fill the other offices as it may determine. The term of the chairperson and other officers shall be one year with eligibility for reelection. The planning board shall adopt rules for transaction of its business and shall keep a record of its members attendance and of its resolution discussions, dah, 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 dah." Does not provide any guidance on when that decision occurs. Yeah, I may need to consult with the town attorney on this, but we'll, we'll get clear on it prior to, so.
I, I, I read that exact thing about a dozen times, and I couldn't see anything that would. I was appointed in May, I believe, and I'm not going to be able to serve past February, so. Why would this, the ordinance was clear to me, and maybe you see something I don't see.
Yeah, I mean. Do members come on since that time?
Sure. I, I mean, I, I'll tell you, I have one procedural concern and then probably one practical political concern. So what I would say to you is that I would let, I would prefer that our ordinances have defined time periods and that if someone becomes the chairperson, that they serve the remainder of that term, just like someone who replaces a member of the board, they serve for the remainder of that term. If one of you resigned, we don't appoint someone for a new three-year term. You're finishing out a term. And I just think it's cleaner and neater and easier to keep track of if you say the chairperson's elected every March and he's, he or she serves for a year or two years or whatever term people think is appropriate. So, I'm trying to move our ordinances into greater clarity on those kind of things, not the end of the world, right? I mean, it's obviously worked fine in the past. You know, from a, from a practical or political standpoint, given the change in the planning board that is coming in a couple of months and, and given the concerns that folks have expressed, I, I think that any planning board chairperson would want to have the full support and confidence of all of the members. And in some ways, and please don't take this in any personal way, because I've actually had this personal experience, sometimes it undermines the person who is elected, and then there's a quick change right after that. So, I had an experience where I was selected to be the city manager of South Lake Tahoe, California by a group of elected officials. And between the time they hired me and the time that the new board was seated, they were voted out of office. And so, I, it, as it turned out, I got along fine with those new elected officials, but it was definitely a strange dynamic, right? And so, I want to make sure that whoever we have in these roles, that we set them up for success in the future. So, I just offer that really as practical commentary to you, so.
So, Mike, go, go ahead. So my question was, would be, or is, if Alex is appointed today as the new chair, and then in a month, they decide they want someone else, or when the new board is seated, they decide they want someone else, can they just reappoint someone at that time?
No. The, the ordinance, what Frank said, he'd like to see it, like the commissioners, our ordinance is not like that. It is solely within the purview of the planning board to elect their chair, and it's for a one-year period. They're eligible for reappointment at the end of one year. And here we have a situation where the elected chair, myself, is not going to be here. Okay, so the choices I have, I could wait till the last minute and say, okay, you got elected chair, but I thought being, to provide a transition with the new people coming in, doing it tonight would be a far better solution to the problem.
Yeah, so the selection of the chairperson is clearly within the purview of the five or six members of the planning board. Absolutely no disagreement there. Technically, I think the person can serve for a year based on what the language says that I just read to you. I would like to discuss it with the town attorney. Practically speaking, I would just ask you to consider the other comment, and you take it or leave it as you see fit.
No, I'm fine with it. I mean, I'm, you know, as, as the person who, you know, kind of is being elected, if you will, have a conversation, have the conversation, because the point that you make is a fair one, you know? I don't want to have no support. You know, I, I want to, if I'm going to be the chair, I'm going to be the chair. One thing's for sure, I'm going to be here. I mean, unless, unless, unless they have something to say, you know, that, that's a different story, right? If they have something different to say about it, and they don't want me to finish my term, then that's, that's, that's a different story, yeah.
And again, please take that with, in the spirit in which it's intended. Whoever is the chairperson, I want that person to be successful.
Yeah, I, I totally do. I mean, I, I think, I like to believe that everybody here, right, has seen that I'm very objective about things. I, I like to think that. You know, we don't always fall in the same place, but I do look at both sides of the equation, and I try to have an open and honest dialogue with everybody. And, you know, if, would I like to serve as it? Sure. Because I, I think that whoever's going to be in that position should be objective, should want to do the work for the town, right, especially some of the critical stuff that we have coming up. So, I'll absolutely go on record and express that sentiment, you know? However, that being said, I totally understand the viewpoint that you're bringing forward, you know, and, and I, I say, have the, have the talk.
Go ahead, you're next.
All right. The pers, to, if, I'm going to just, if, if they wanted, didn't want you to be chair and wanted you out, they'd have to dismiss you from the board, but that is another procedure by itself. Not, not in the thing he just ripped, that Frank just read, but it is another procedure himself. They can, and there's criteria that they have to apply for that to happen.
Oh, and they've done it before.
My question is, can a planning board exist without a chair?
Practically speaking, you need someone to lead the meeting, so suppose you could on a short-term basis if the rest of the members designated someone to lead the meeting, but I would recommend you have a chair.
Correct me if I'm wrong there, that's, that's what the vice chairs were, right, so.
Well, certainly, yeah, the vice chair, if there, if there's no chair, the vice chair would do it. But if you hadn't either, you, you want a chairperson.
Yeah, yeah, it makes sense. I was just talking about for the short-term periods, like, if there is a transition, the new board comes in, they don't know who each other are. How are they going to elect a chair, you know? Well, Alex gets it because he's been here before, you know, he's been here the longest or something, but they don't know him from anybody.
Yeah, and again, the selection is really not my business as a staff. I'm just simply trying to share some helpful insights with you. So it is clearly up to the five or six members of the planning board to make that decision.
So my question is, can we move on and who is leading the meeting from now on?
Are you vice chair now?
I am vice chair right now.
Yeah, so I think it, if, assuming that Chairman King is resigned from being the chair, Chairman Quintella is now your chairperson, at least for the rest of this meeting and your January meeting, and potentially beyond that, but let me just at least ask a question, so.
You said potentially beyond that. His term is until 2026, so what, he, he would serve for one year, starting from this day, and then.
I, I believe that that's correct, based on the language that I just read to you. I do at least want to have a conversation with the town attorney about that, but I suspect that you're right because it is rather open-ended in the current ordinance.
So you have to bake tarts? That sounds fun. Let's move, let's move. It's your meeting.
Great, so, um, just want to say thank you, right? I will say, you know, just, I think it's important to acknowledge, Paxton, I want to congratulate you, you know, yesterday, I think that it was important that they actually took that decision moving forward. You know, because to have controversy looming over anybody's head and over your head, especially in town's head, it's just, there's no need for that. So, I'm happy that you're fully instilled, and, you know, I look forward to working with all of you in this capacity.
What was that decision? I missed it.
So Paxton is now a full-voting member of the planning board.
Okay, gotcha.
Yes, so, again, congratulations. All right, I think, looking here at the future planning board discussion items, I, I just do have one question, and if anybody else has any, please chime in, but are we any closer, Julie, to that sign ordinance of draft, or Frank, any, any closer to that one?
We do have a draft, and I've been reviewing that with Julie. In light of the change in the planning board, honestly, I'm reconsidering the timing of bringing that forward, and I'm honestly reconsidering the overall approach for it. So I, I do not expect to bring that in January, potentially February, could be later. You know, the other thing that I'm, I committed to the Board of Commissioners, one of my goals is to really completely rewrite the UDO, hopefully to simplify it significantly. And so I'm reconsidering whether or not I just need to plow ahead with that right now and include the sign ordinance in that. So, that's a long way of saying I'm not sure.
That seemed to be the sentiment last night, right? That seemed to be the sentiment last night, so.
I, I'd agree with that, being that we're going to have new membership here, no big things now.
Yeah.
Right, 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 and that's why I was wondering about the sign ordinance. I thought for, for the most part, that one was kind of getting ready to get buttoned up, but, you know, if I'm mistaken, then so be it. And that's fine. I mean, I think, you know, otherwise, looking at some of this stuff here, did we, did we ever come to anything regarding the, kind of the yard debris placement? And I think that one was being taken tied into some of the encroachment on the, the right-of-way. Am I, am I, am I recalling that one correctly?
Oh, well, I'll tell you, my recollection, and. Well, I'll tell you my recollection, and I, I've spoke to Frank about this. You know, there's, the ordinance is pretty clear. You've got 10 days in front of it. And a lot of time was spent deciding on that 10 days so that people could have a week and a weekend on either end for the people that aren't in here. But some people just, in my experience, they, they go out and they do this because it's convenient for them and they ignore the law. My suggestion, or what I did as a zoning officer, I wrote out a letter when they were out early and I made copies of it, I put it in Ryan, gave it to Ryan. And I said, look, if you see somebody just hang this on their door, and it tended, that person wouldn't do it again, okay? Just a simple reminder that this is the ordinance and this is why we have the ordinance, because we don't want piles out there 24/7. And I'm not, wasn't in support at the time of going to pick up as, as generated, because then ends up tying up one whole person and puts a lot more road miles on a vehicle and wears it out way sooner than it is if you go pick up every two months, the way we do now. So that would be.
I guess, I'll just put this out there. Something that I saw personally on, on Bahia, right, is that after, the, the kind of the date seemed to come and go, right? My only kind of concern would be writing or recommending anything to be ordered like that would be, is there a grace period? Because we overshot ourselves, right? Like we, we said, hey, we'll pick, you know, 10 days, but then for whatever reason, town can't get to it. You know, they're running a little bit behind. Does that now create a conflict for the town?
Yeah, so the ordinance says you can place it at the curb 10 days in advance, as Chairman, or former Chairman King indicated. It typically takes our staff anywhere from five to eight days to make the collection and we plan for that accordingly. It was a much quicker collection this time, because there's not as much stuff out this time of year. In the busier periods, it could be as much as two weeks. But you know, the, the one thing that I would suggest to you, and at the risk of possibly offending you in some way, which I don't intend to do, I would encourage the planning board to focus more on development regulations and land use planning, as opposed to things that maybe fall more under the purview of the Board of Commissioners, things like yard debris placement, things like where a park should go. That gets a little bit gray on the park, because I could see the element of planning involved in that. But I, I personally think it would be beneficial for the planning board to focus on the development regulations or any new plans that we might receive. Just so happens, we haven't received any new commercial plans or subdivision plans. But, so that would be my recommendation to you going forward, so.
Discussion?
I agree with that. I don't know how that got on here, but it did. You know, since, you know, we started that with a front-end loader and a truck and that program and it's become one of the most wildly popular things, you know, it's not violated that much, but you know, just a friendly letter to some of these people gets in the line.
Yeah, and I will say to you, I mean, in everything, patient for the staff and for myself is to be as customer-friendly as we can, so. Unless they don't want to write someone about money, I want them to just comply, so.
Keeping in mind the feedback you just gave us, which I think is important, and thank you for that. For 7C, the TC zoning district, just trying to get some kind of, I guess we're also looking at that for the incoming board later on down the line, is that right?
Yeah, but in addition to that, I'm still working with, I'm still having conversations with the affected landowners and still have some more work to do on that. I'm trying very hard to build consensus and support for that so that by the time it gets to the planning board and the Board of Commissioners, hopefully it's an easier process. Well, you can tell me how well I did when we get there, so.
Sing you all the praises. All right. Any further discussion on these items? Or are we good to move on?
The only thing I would suggest is just don't put anything big on, on January's item, you know, the new board. Finish up what we have, maybe have a short meeting in January, and that'll be it for some of us.
Agreed. Anybody else? Perfect. All right, the next Board of Commissioners meeting, scheduled for Monday, January the 8th. And ours is January 16th. Is there any reason that that date might not work for us, January 16th? Okay. Yes, Julie?
I think it could be appropriate to identify who will report to the Board of Commissioners if there will be a planning board report at that meeting.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I'd have to go back and look at the notes that you initially came up with, Mike, but.
Yeah, I have lost what notes I had on that. I would expect, I would let the chair decide if he wants to do it or he wants some, somebody else to volunteer.
I think that would be appropriate if you're comfortable with that.
Well, I mean, looking around, I think for that meeting, it's probably best if I just do it. I think until, you know, things kind of settle down, right? And I don't want to put that on anybody else. I think, you know, just, I think it's the right thing to do. Then I'll go ahead and just give that one. I mean, it should be short and sweet anyway, so. Okay, town staff comments. Frank, Julie, anything to add?
I don't have anything.
No, just thank you for your input and your service and see you in January.
Additional planning board member comments?
Nothing here.
Yeah, first of all, I mentioned to Frank, they moved the planning board to the end of the agenda, which is, the meeting last night, which is highly inappropriate, inappropriate, and I know how it happened. I would ask that we work to put it in the appropriate place in front, because many times the planning board, given their report, has input on something that's on the agenda. So, you know, after the consent agenda or someplace up in the front, before you get to the items, I would suggest that. The second item I would say, I was very much disappointed in last night. You know, this, this board that I've been a part of for so long, we, we really tried to do the work this, this board is forced to do and it was, I was put in my place last night, okay? Really, not much I could say there. It was an awkward situation for me up there. And I hope going forward, that we can smooth this thing out a bit better. It just, I could tell you a story that, you know, I was really over it by the time I went to bed last night. But I'll tell you one I wasn't over with, and just for a little humor here in the end. I was, first term as a planning board chair, we went through, and I had to go to two meetings a week. They had a planning section and then a voting section. I had to be at both of them. And one night, they were, finished the meeting, they went into closed session. I headed out the door because I'm not going to stick around, it wouldn't involve me. And one of the commissioners come over and says, Mike, you need to, you need to stick around. And I said, what for? It's a closed session. He says, it's about you. And so I said, okay, I sat there apprehensive. They went into closed session and it was about firing me. And they took me to closed session and I was on the board to fire him. And the reason they were firing, firing me is because I had used the attorney on the issues that we have too often. Well, I read the ordinance, it says that the planning board is given the choice, if he needs legal help, to use the town attorney. I'd use them. And believe it or not, the person who saved my butt the first time was the town attorney. So, anyway.
Who's the man?
I ain't going to get in any of that. You weren't there?
Well, I would tell you, that's an illegal closed session, but will bygones be bygones.
Just, just real quick, if I could, you know, Mike, thank you. You know, I, I agree with you. I think last night was unfortunate. However, elected officials are going to do as they do. I will say, and I'd like to just, just echo the sentiment, and this is my own personal sentiment, not necessarily that of the boards, but I will say, I thought about it long and hard last night. You know, I wore a uniform for 17 years and I served my community proudly. When I come do things like this, I always think about the people of this town. I always try to see things down the middle. And I, my one wish is for that board, that's been put up there by the people rightfully, to really do it the same way, regardless of whatever personal biases or opinions, beliefs that they have. You know, when, when we come here, we get together, right? Whether I lead this group forward or not, I still will try to execute my term the best that I can to the best of my ability, always keeping those people who are not here, maybe listening in or whatnot, in mind. What I saw last night was not something I could be proud of. There was some bickering and bantering and, you know, politics gets in the way and it's unfortunate. This is a small town, you know, that stuff should stay well out of here. We have a lot of good work that could be done here, you know, Frank, the staff, everybody here is, is great. There's no need for any of that stuff in there. And again, I think when we start going sideways on stuff, square one should always be the people. And so for what that's worth, I want to echo that sentiment, that at least the public should know that as it comes to this board, as it comes to me, we're going to do our, our best to execute on that. And I, and I would hate to see a situation where people start to get appointed to this board with intentions and self-serving interests and things like that. You know, Paxton, I mean it. I congratulate you for really getting on here. I, you know, we've talked, right, and, and, and we, without getting too far into it, I see things right down the middle, okay? And then, you know, I, I think you're an important piece to this, you know, I seriously mean that. And so anything we do moving forward, we all really need to look holistically at things and take a step back and just kind of diffuse all that nonsense. Because how are we ever supposed to move forward this area? We look around us right now, our, our neighbors to the north in Pelletier here, they've got some things going on there that you could just scratch your head. And I'd hate to see us to get into a situation when we start to follow suit of some of these other places here. So, you know, with that said, I just want to wish all you a happy and healthy holidays, New Year. We'll come back and convene, but hopefully we can put some of that stuff behind us. Neil, thank you very much for all your time. It's been a pleasure. And that's it. Thank you, everyone. Oh, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Good night.